The pre-meeting order. Thank you all for being here. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda? The only item I wanted to mention, if we have time, we need to, I think, be sure to adjourn this meeting by four o'clock, is we have a personnel meeting, a couple of matters that we need to attend to before the five o'clock meeting. So, I think we have a hard stop at four. If we do have a little bit of time getting through all the other items, I wanted to bring up the idea that we've talked about a little bit before, just kind of here and there, about under what circumstances the board might want to consider resolutions on different issues. Somewhat timely, there's, we are anticipating there's going to be a lot of folks at our meeting this evening asking us to adopt a resolution. And so, if we have time, I might want to just, you know, not ask for a commitment or vote or anything, but just to have a short discussion about that if we have time following the other items. Any other items folks would like to cover today? All right. Our first item is the A R C application, and Tim Love is going to talk to us about this item.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. As part of this section, we're doing kind of a preview of the February 18th meeting, so no slides today. I'm going to be very brief, just to give you a heads up about what's coming. If you have any questions, I'll of course talk about them. One of the items is a public hearing, so I'm really not going to get into the weeds at all on that, but just wanted you to know that it's coming. So, we'll start first with the A R C item. And so, the A R C item, we bring it to you, it's new business at our next meeting, involves connecting the Smokey Park Bridge to the existing road infrastructure on Jacob Home Way, which connects to Walk Off Way and also to Sand Hill Road. As you're aware, you know, this project started in 2015. Since then, you know, we were unable to complete the project then, but we pursued other funding mechanisms and have done so successfully. At our next meeting, we'd like to bring to you kind of a resolution for your support on the project and to fill the balance of the project, which is about a million dollars, but we can talk through that more at our next meeting, but wanted to give you a heads up for that project coming down the pike. Are there any initial questions on that? Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. You know, this is a day for me, February 18th is going to be a day that I've been looking forward to for a long time, and it would not have happened without some, you know, hard work. And, you know, there's going to be, you know, public-private, you know, funding of this. And particularly want to thank, I want to thank the entire board for being supportive of this, but I particularly want to thank Brownie and Robert from, you know, the beginning. They've been part of the discussions and, you know, holding a lot of different people accountable and just trying to figure out a way. Originally, that bridge was built, and if John Bowles is listening, we can change the name from the Bridge to Nowhere, now to the Bridge to Sand Hill, to Hockon, to Ink Intermediate, to the new Fire Department, to the Ballfields and much more. But it's going to, what I'm excited about, it's going to take, it will, and DOT will confirm this, it will take traffic off of Sand Hill. I think it'll make, it's just going to make a tremendous difference to the community. So, I'm really, really excited about it, what it's going to do for the community, looking forward to all the details and things coming out on the 18th.
Thank you for that. And on the 18th, we will have an agreement ready for your review and approval. In addition, we'll have folks representing our different partners, which are both public and private, so.
Thank you.
And we anticipate that by that date, the details of all the other partnership aspects in terms of site agreements and funding, that's all pretty much ready, will be ready to go at that time.
That is correct.
Great.
Sticking in Anka Industrial Park, there's another item that we're bringing forward. It's a separate item but closely related, and this relates to the Anka Heritage Trail. And as you're aware, you approved this project in March of 2019 at a regular meeting of the board, lots of pieces, including, you know, ballfield lights, as well as turfing, et cetera. So, as part of that, there was the Anka Heritage Trail, and we secured the majority of that easement in March of 2019. However, there was a small portion that was not secured related to the Anka Water Authority, or excuse me, Anka Water Corporation. We've since, staff have worked with that entity to develop an agreement that provides the easement to us to secure the rest of that roadway, or excuse me, greenway. And so, we'll bring that forward at the February 18th meeting as well, but wanted to give you a heads up since this is pre-meeting.
That's great.
Any questions there? Good deal. Thank you all.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
You want to keep going?
Yeah, I'll step back up. All right, so next item, we're switching gears to a, this is basically a notice of a public hearing for the February 18th meeting. This relates to the Nypro Corporation, which is located in Arden. As many of you would have seen at this point, there was an announcement on Friday regarding additional capital investment, jobs at around $22 an hour, as well as, you know, their continued operations in Arden. We will have a public hearing two weeks from now, and at that point, you will consider any economic development agreement with the entity, but I won't speak anymore on it because that's what a public hearing's for. Questions or comments? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Tim. All right, next up is approval of a resolution to appoint Sheriff Employees and Deputy Finance Officer for Inmate Trust Bank Account, and Don Warren will present this.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up that at the 18th meeting, I will be bringing a resolution forward to appoint some Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office employees as Deputy Finance Officer. This is related to a local government commission unit visit that we had, and the inmate trust account is a separate account that they are the signers on, and by law, we have to have a Deputy Finance Officer sign the checks, so I can't be there in the middle of the night to sign checks for inmates. So, we want to turn that responsibility over to some of the sheriff's employees. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have, otherwise, you'll see this on the 18th.
Was that something that you just, you know, discovered that we needed to do or in your new role?
Yeah. It should have been done forever, but it's just one of the little accounts that just kind of got overlooked, and as we dig in through everything, we're finding little bits and pieces that we need to kind of tighten up.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Don. Next up is the East Asheville Library Budget Resolution Technical Correction.
As long as it's not money.
Commissioners, back in December, I think we were all victim of having too many cooks in the kitchen, because what we had was, we had some staff working on a presentation for the board, and down in my legal office, we had, we're working with different numbers. The resolution that was approved by motion of Commissioner Belcher approved only the base price of the construction of $5,900,000 and change. If you recall, back there on the December 17th, there was a slide that showed figures including that base price, but also included things like the playground, crosswalk, basketball court, and furnishings, meaning that it was $6,977,000 and change, which is what was presented and what we presumed that this board would have approved. So, we just want to have that on so that you can correct that to the full presentation and what we believe the commission's intent was at that time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a couple of staff updates. First, Christina McIntee and Chris Austin are going to talk to us about security updates.
Good afternoon. I am Chris Austin. I am the new County Safety Officer. Do you mind bringing up our presentation, please? What I'm here to talk about with everybody this afternoon, just kind of bring everybody up to speed, is, you know, in today's time, as much as we hate to say it, it is becoming an issue with there being active assailants and active violence going on at government facilities. So, what we're trying to do is the county's trying to take a proactive approach and trying to get ahead of this and come up with a training, training program and get things in place to be able to address this. Part of that is the county has made up a safety and security team. As you can see, it is made up of multiple people from different departments. With this, what we're trying to do is get perspectives from everybody in all these different departments to make sure that we all, we are following all state mandated codes and regulations. We do want to make sure we're following all OSHA guidelines. And then with this, everybody from all these different departments brings in a very different perspective on what they see as a safety and security issue. We do meet the first Tuesday, I'm sorry, we meet the third Tuesday of every month. If any of the Commissioners would like to join our meetings, you're more than welcome to. Part of this, we did have a member of the Homeland Security, Cyber Security and Infrastructure Survey Agency come and do an assessment of some of our buildings. He is working with us to give us an outline of where our strengths and weaknesses fall. What we're hoping to get out of this is a tool that we can use to work on all of the county buildings and use moving forward to be able to better beef up our security.
Good afternoon. I'm Jody Razner with IT. I'd like to give a little background on this project. When we started this project a few years ago, our original, our original goal was to get a mass notification system that would integrate with our existing systems. So, we researched some vendors and found three that met our requirements as far as integration. What we did from there is we then conducted an assessment, a needs assessment, with several buildings that have front-facing counters. We met with those managers to determine what their needs were. During the needs assessment process, we realized that what they were really asking for was in-building notification. And what I mean by that are panic buttons, alert beacons, different ways to notify staff within a building, or let staff know in other buildings nearby that there was an incident taking place. For example, a manager might be on the second floor with his front desk counter on the first floor, and they might need assistance in diffusing a situation at the front counter. Also, we've had an incident where there was something going on in another building across the street, and they didn't know it, and were sending their staff to that building. So, their concern was more focused on being able to protect the employees and members within the building, as well as in the regional areas. What we did is we refocused our efforts then, and we went and started looking for vendors that could supply us with the hardware and the means to be able to give those in-building notifications. We spoke with our mass notification vendors that we had been working with, and all three of them integrated with a company called Alertis, which offered this hardware that we were seeking. From there, we, we spoke with Alertis and their top competitor. Their top competitor was very honest with us and said, "We can only offer you 80% of what your needs assessment requires, but Alertis can offer you 100%." So, we felt real confident with that. We then did, conducted demos with our stakeholders, not just the ones we met with, but stakeholders throughout the county, and demos with IT, and it was determined that Alertis would meet all of those requirements that were needed from the needs assessment and along with IT integrations. Any questions?
With this, we are going to have a hardware that Alertis is providing to us. We have conducted a county-wide assessment. We have walked through the county buildings with a representative from Alertis to help us identify what the needs are and what needs to be going into these buildings to make sure that all of our employees are notified in the case of emergency. They are able to provide one single solution, so that way, we can notify everybody within the building and the surrounding buildings in a very timely manner. What we're working on now and what we're going to be doing moving forward is, the county is taking this time to go ahead and do a routine update on our County All Hazards Plan. This is just a very generic general plan that covers a lot of emergency situations. We're just using this as a good time to roll this back out to some of the county employees and just give them a refresher on everything. And then, we are planning to have staff training on the Alertis system and how it's going to work, and then roll that out to everybody. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, thank you.
Our last item is FY '21 Budget Calendar Update, and Jennifer Barnett will present this item.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. We wanted to provide you all with an outline of the proposed schedule for fiscal year 2021 budget meetings. I'm going to talk through each of these dates and to what, so to give you information on what to expect, but the first four meetings are proposed for your pre-meeting schedule, and then the last three are for regular meeting. Similar to last year, we plan to review the budget with you all in incremental phases as we progress through the latter stages of our budget development. Beginning with March 17th, we plan to provide you a preliminary review of our first pass of projected revenues for the fiscal year 2021 budget. First pass expenditures will follow on April the 7th. By April 21st, we will have made it through a final review of departmental requests with the county manager and compiled other budget amounts that are relevant for the general fund. On April 21st, we will provide you with a third quarter fiscal year 2020 financial report that will include a projection of estimated year-end, in addition to a combined review of fiscal year 2021 revenue and expenditures, noting any changes or updates since our first pass. So, we, we may refer to that as our second pass at that time. We are scheduled to hear from our education partners, so AB Tech, Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools, in addition to any fire districts that are requesting tax rate increases on May 5th. And county manager's recommended budget is scheduled for May 19th, with the public hearing on the recommended budget on June the 2nd, and budget adoption scheduled for June the 16th. Any questions or...
Could you put the, could you put that back up, please? So, the March 17th first pass revenues and April 7th first pass expenditures, those are forecasts for next year, not updates on this year?
That's correct. That is, that is kind of our first look at fiscal year 2021. And the reason for, so, seeing this in incremental phases, it gives us the opportunity to see, first pass expenditures are probably going to be pretty close to like what is at the, like what is requested. We've gone through that preliminary review with the county manager, and then, and then there will be some refinement that happens between that April 7th date and the April 21st date. So, you'll, you'll look at what's changed since our first pass, where have we looked to refine the budgetary request. So, that's why it's important for us to look at fiscal year 20's projected year-end in the context of then, what would we be looking at for fiscal year 2021?
One other question is, so the education request will be understood by May 5th. The county manager's recommended budget will be at the next meeting on May 19th. Obviously, those are big pieces of the budget, right? So, do you anticipate that you'll have, that you, that we may not really know what they're looking for until May 5th? It just seems like a very compressed timeframe from learning that information to, you know, a week later, you're having to put a recommended county manager budget, you know, in preparation for the May 19th meeting. Do you have a sense that you'll probably have a lot of information prior to that, and that's just kind of the drop dead date on the final, final number, or is it going to be kind of unveiled at that date?
No, we actually have meetings set up with them in April to start getting a feel of what they're asking for, but the 5th is the final time that they will come to you and present any ask, but we're hoping to work with them throughout the month of April to get what they're looking for and what the expectations would be.
And Chairman Newman, if you'll remember from last, last budget planning cycle, we did provide and do plan to provide to those education partners the unrestricted revenue growth rate, and that's kind of the starting point for us when we do first pass. So, we will have provided what's that anticipated growth rate. We will add that growth rate, growth rate to the first pass, so you will see that, and then obviously, you know, there, there may be changes going into the May 5th and 19th, but that's a starting place.
Could we get any sort of previews during the month of April at work sessions, just of, even in broad brushstrokes of the ways the school, school districts' funding requests are coming together? I'd love opportunity to kind of dig a little deeper on that, and also just maybe others can help me sort of think this through, but last year, a part of how we handled the school allocation was going to be contingent upon the passage of the state budget, which still has not passed. I don't think the legislature will have reconvened by the time we meet with them on May 5th. So, I just want to kind of, I don't know if you all have sort of had opportunity to think through how, how we might head into this season, given that, and, yeah.
I mean, even though, really every year that I've been here, every year that I've been here, even though we did not, even though that budget wasn't past the state budget, you know, through different means of communication, we kind of had an idea of where things are going to land, and it was, it was, you know, last year wasn't too bad. I mean, it worked out pretty good, you know, and we knew what our revenue was, and we had good conversations, but I would, Commissioner Farrar, I would think that we would probably have, have discussions, you know, of some type prior, you know, maybe information in work sessions, or, you know, as that, as that information is given to us, I would think that we would discuss it as soon as we could. It's always beneficial. But that's every year that, you know, every year they say the state budget, state budget, state budget, and it's true, because they're, they're waiting on that, but it's, it's, forecasting it is pretty doable, is that right? Most of the time? That's what, that's, that's...
And I think the state budget, we can't, we would expect, you know, what they're about would be, and the city, the schools actually give us that expectation. The schools would give us the expectation of what they expect to come from the state. The other additional request that we want to get our hands around, last year, they asked for mental health workers. We expect that conversation again this year. So, those are the pieces that I think Commissioner Beechfarrah was referencing. What is the additional ask that they will have of us beyond the state budget funding?
And if there's nothing, you know, huge, big coming out of the state, like change of class sizes or something, that's just a big discussion that we're just not sure how much it's going to cost, if it's just a normal teacher increase or, you know, whatever, then typically, those conversations and forecasts are not really hard to do.
But, you know, I agree with Commissioner Beechfarrah, because I served on the city school board for eight years, and I cannot remember, this is the first time that we've gotten to this point that I can remember, that we didn't have a budget, period. You know, usually, it's, you know, the two years or whatever, but I think that's what's difficult this time. We don't have a budget, so, and we don't have any idea when it's going to be approved.
I've never been here, here a year where we, where we knew when the budget was going to be adopted. It's always, it's always been a moving...
Now, it's not that, Joe. I agree with you there, but we have known what the budget is. Now, we don't have a budget. They're working on a continuing budget.
Yeah, I understand.
And I never remembered this.
Yeah.
No, at this point in time, not after when the regular budget was to be approved, and usually it is, it's every other year, but I've never known us to reach this point with a continuing budget.
So, but, you know, what has happened, and it may not happen this year, but what has happened every year is that there is a certain amount of concern and, and, panic's not the right word, but a certain amount of concern from the state level in the budget when it comes to the education budget, but we, we've been able to gather that information in, in a timely enough fashion to be able to make good decisions when it comes to our education budget, and I'm hopeful we'll do the same thing, but to Beechfarrah, to Commissioner Farrar's point, I think that we will probably need to have a little discussion at work sessions. I think it's where this started, so.
I am also curious if we can ask particularly the K-12 school systems to present their data in a similar way. Last year, we were comparing growth to proficiency, and there were a lot of discrepancies there, and if we can ask them to be presenting the same information based on their school districts, I know that would certainly be helpful. Just a minor point.
So, we comparing apples to apples.
Exactly.
So, one additional thought to answer Commissioner Beechfarrah's question, we have asked that the education partners submit to us during the month of April, and I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but as soon as we have that information, I'm happy to share that with the board so that you can, you know, begin reviewing it.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, we have gone through all of our items, so if you'd be okay with the Commission, I would like to come back to the question for just a couple of minutes to have some discussion about resolutions. You know, the, we do not have any formal adopted commission policy on when would we take up a resolution, under what circumstances we would and, or would not. There has been sort of a unspoken practice of not taking up resolutions on issues that aren't really unique to Buncombe County, so that's been our past practice, but I know that there are occasions when there are issues going on in our state, in particular, probably at the state level, maybe, maybe at the national level, that people feel like, gosh, you know, we ought to let our voice be known on this. So, but we've never, we get, I'm sure other folks get asked by constituents to talk about these things all the time, and I let folks know, well, we're not really, we don't really have a policy on when to take these up. So, I just wanted to, to raise the question with the Commission. You know, I, I, my thoughts on it are that I think that what we want to be careful of is being distracted in terms of just spending, we could spend all of our time taking positions on the, you know, the hot topic, you know, societal issues of the day. We could literally spend all our time doing that, and I'm not sure how much of a big difference it would really make in Raleigh or in Washington or anywhere else. So, we need to stay focused on the issues that really are our responsibility. We've got, you know, a lot of work to do here, so we don't want to be distracted. On the, on the other hand, you know, I think that we are an elected body on behalf of the people for Buncombe County, so there are, sometimes it does feel kind of compelling to, to kind of let our, let our positions be known. So, so the, kind of where I kind of came down on this thinking about it would be, what if we, what if we adopted an approach where we would say, you know, let's have a meeting each year, maybe before the legislature goes back into session, where if there are issues that folks want the commission to say something about, like, we would have a meeting where that would be on the agenda, and folks could do that. But it would be that meeting, so, so we would address the concern that we would just end up getting asked to do resolution after resolution. Every meeting, we end up spending an hour debating some state or national issue that really we don't have much control over, and it does really distract us away from kind of doing our core job. So, that's one idea I've had about a possible way where we could, we could weigh in on a few things, but we would carve out a specific time to do it, and we, you know, people have ideas, we could bring them forward, debate them, vote on them, but then, once we're done with that, we would move on and, you know, and not have it be something that is taking up a lot of time at all of our other meetings. So, just one idea, I wanted to float and see what other Commissioners are, think about this issue. And, and we're not making any decision today, this is purely for discussion.
I think that, that there are going to be people in the county that are going to wish to have the Commissioner's support in a lot of different ways. And I think it's, as a, as a citizen, they, they should have the ability to do that whenever they want to do that. The county, we are limited to do, you know, certain things, you know, when it comes to government, you know, we're limited, I think we, I'd look at attorney for this, but we, we have specific requirements that we can adopt, ordinances, resolutions, and we do things by motion. I think that's, I mean, the others, we just, I can say my support, or I can give my support to certain things, but, and we have legal requirements around the way we do those, is that correct?
For, for many items, yes, that is required.
Yes, for many items, so, so, but, I mean, it's not a bad idea. I don't know how, it's awful difficult to pull off a one-time thing where people can come in and get us to support resolutions. I mean, we get them all the time. We really do. I mean, we had...
We do, but we usually don't, we usually don't do anything on them, you know.
We usually just.
We just say, we don't, we don't do that kind of stuff, right? Kind of stay out of that.
Well, we don't, yeah, it's, it's kind of been a little bit all over the board on some things. But I think two, about two years ago, I guess a couple of years ago, and you may have started it, I don't know, about, we tried to get away from doing those because they can be distracting. But, but people, people do need to be able to come in and give their opinion, and I think they'll continue to do that. But resolutions are, they are, they are, they are difficult, you know.
And I think that, I mean, I certainly think if there's some issue that is uniquely affecting Buncombe County, of course, at any time, you know, the commission should feel free to put, put an issue like that on the agenda. You know, I would just use an example, and I don't know where everyone, you know, his thoughts are on this particular topic at this time, but like the issue around changing the election schedules in Buncombe County. Like, you know, some folks came to us and said, hey, you know, I don't like the way that happened. I think if it's going to change in the future for elections, specifically in Buncombe County, not a statewide issue, but I think things like that, we should certainly be able to kind of think about that. And if we agree, yeah, we do want to say something about that, then we should. But this question is kind of more about, you know, issues that really are kind of more statewide, or maybe they affect Buncombe County, but they affect all other 99 counties too. They're not just unique to the county. There's a ton of issues like that out there. So how do we handle requests either from citizens to take those issues up or if there's, if there's some commissioners who are interested in saying something about them? You know, is there an approach that we could all kind of live with around how we handle those?
Could we, are you wanting to make a decision in the next couple of weeks on this? Does it have a couple of thoughts?
I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any, you know, particular urgency around it. It's, it's more of just, no, it's not necessarily time urgent. But if there was some kind of shared sense of, yeah, this is an approach, then I'd be happy to support moving something forward, but it doesn't, it's not time sensitive, I don't think.
I think it might be interesting to take a look at what some other counties across the state are doing that may be of similar size, or maybe just doing something policy-wise that says, here is how we do this, so that we're not just grasping for straws. We can take a look at what is working for others and maybe use that as a good starting point.
I would love to explore some different options and would be very open to trying the approach of having a designated day, can see how that goes. It does feel like it's one of our core functions, or sort of to the extent we have legislative abilities, that's one of them. And that this is a, I think it's very reasonable for community members to, to want an elected body within their community to kind of weigh in on topics that affect their lives. And at times, honestly, it feels a little bit hard to slice and dice the ones we distinguish as having a local relevance. There's obviously ones that have immediate relevance to Buncombe County, right? But then there's so many issues that where Buncombe County residents' lives are very affected by the way an issue might play out in another branch of government. So I'm pro-resolution, including those I would have maybe voted against. I think the discussion is good. I think it's a great way to help engage people in county government. And I think it's one of the ways that we have an opportunity to kind of act and, and, and be in the public square. So I'm eager to hear what other people think, would love to learn what other communities do. And my inclination would be, let's jump in the pool and paddle around a little and see what happens. And then we can make a more informed decision than kind of standing on the edge and wondering what the water's like. So that's where I would land.
All righty. Any other, anybody else have any thoughts on this? Robert, you got any initial feedback?
I guess I would like to make sure that it's black and white. If we're gonna do it, but I've seen too many gray areas in the past that we've done. So if we're going to look at it, I want it to be one way or the other, and then not depending on party or anything else of why we're going to do this. More discussion.
All right.
And I think, I don't see anything wrong with the way we're doing it now, no more than they come up. But I don't think you can put a resolution in a box. It's going to be hard to do because there will be different issues to come up. But, you know, I think, you know, that might be one way to look at doing it one meeting or looking at other ways of doing it. But honestly, I think they go, that goes with the turf of being commissioners. You know, that's part of it, that's part of the American way. So, you know, I don't have, you know, with me, I could go either way, it's however we look at it. But I don't have a lot of problems with what we're doing now.
All right, well, thanks for everyone's feedback on this. If we could do, maybe just have the staff kind of take a look at ways different counties around the state handle this. If there's, I don't know what the best way to research that might be, but if there's some way to do that, that'd be helpful. I'm sure there's, I'm sure it runs a gamut from people who probably just like to sit around and do this all day and folks who have no interest in it. But, um, so, but yeah, would that be possible?
Absolutely, yes, thank you. We would go ahead and take a look at that and bring something back to you.
All right, terrific. All right, well, thanks very much for everyone's time and feedback on that idea. I think we've concluded everything on our agenda. So we have a closed session that starts at 4:00 PM. And we're going to be, Ms. Hockaday, could you talk to us about the purposes of the closed session? Sorry.
So we would need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Okay. A question, I believe we noticed it for 4:00 PM. Would it be permissible to start it early or do we need to wait until 4:00 PM to do that? Because I think it'd be nice to get started, we've got some other stuff to do, but if we can't do that, we can't do it.
I think you're going to have to wait until 4:00.
Okay, we'll come back at 4:00 PM and we'll go into closed session then. But we're adjourning our pre-meeting now. All right, so we're adjourned.